I just want people to know that Mr. Nelson had a medical emergency not related to the virus, that he couldn't be here tonight in his family. I also want to thank the people who were able to come tonight. I want to let people know that this room was particularly cleaned today because we knew there would be a public meeting here. And I want to thank the custodial staff for taking care of that. And I want to thank Dr. Conti and Mr. Kuna and Ms. Kasha for thinking of all these things. And tonight's meeting, I'm going to hand over to Dr. Conti so we can make sure to cover all the issues that we need to. If the people who are here have advice for us, please, that's what we're here for, is to make the best possible decisions. Thank you, Dr. Conti.
Madam Chair, again, we called this meeting just to begin our communication process. This is a, I think, an unprecedented situation, unprecedented. As I told many people today, this is my first pandemic, so we want to make sure that we're communicating and hopefully last. That's true. So, first person I wanted to invite up to speak to the committee and thank is Town Administrator Paul Sagrino. Paul, just to inform the committee about the decision process to close for two weeks. And there was a meeting yesterday with about 20 communities that involved town administrators, town managers, mayors, and superintendents, followed by a conference call. Both Paul and I participated in that conference call. And there had been a growing disparity where there were, we were getting multiple recommendations from the Mass Department of Public Health and the epidemiologists who were at this meeting. And so I think when we talked through that call, we sort of came around with our neighbors to the two-week closure that occurred. Again, Paul was very supportive of that. I just wanted to thank him. We had been in communication all day. And even prior to that, town departments, the Board of Health, Susan Luminello, had been incredibly supportive of our decisions, answering our questions, getting information from the Mass Department of Public Health. And so I think that really led to the two-week closure. And I think since that time, Paul, the town has taken some actions as well. And if you wanted to just take some time, but again, I just wanted to open with gratitude. So, thank you very much for your support and the support of all the department heads at Town Hall. And again, we're sort of learning as we go. So, again, I appreciate everything.
Well, thank you very much for having me, but I thought we were coming to talk about the budget. Just kidding. Thank you to Eric. I can tell you on the phone call, Eric was a voice of common reason amongst some pretty crazy things that were being said. So, I'm very thankful to him for that. I'm also thankful to all his communication throughout this process. And I'd also like to thank Bob and Nicole. They've been participating in the town's emergency management meetings with, we have department heads and public safety officials, so I'd like to thank them as well for that. And again, thank you for having me here tonight. I'll echo what Eric said. The Board of Health has been unbelievable. Our health director, Susan Luminello, has been providing us with a lot of guidance and assistance and good advice throughout this whole process. And we haven't been given a lot from the state level and, you know, communities have been left to sort of figure out what to do on their own. And I'm very thankful for the team we have in place and what they've been able to guide us to. Now, for an update sort of on town services. COA, our most vulnerable population, is closed for programs and activities, but the building is open and staffed. The phones are there during normal business hours. I would urge all seniors to continue to stay in the communication with the COA. We'll be continuing to provide meals and medical transportation and, I think, IRS tax preparation services for seniors. So, those are really essential services right now, so those will continue. But if anybody, any of our seniors are feeling anxiety or anything, please do call the senior center. All your friends are there, and they should be able to provide you with assistance. And we're coming up with ways to, you know, new ways to deliver services to people that need them will be figured out during this process. But I do urge all seniors to continue to reach out. Staff will be calling on them on a regular basis to check in. And I know that in this community, everybody keeps up with their neighbors. So, I would urge all residents that may be watching to keep an eye on your elderly neighbors and see if they need anything. And if you notice anything that you think maybe not look right, please give us a call and we'll try to find out a way to service that person. The next one is another gathering place that we wanted to sort of eliminate, given schools closing. We didn't want everyone to migrate over to the library. So, I'm thankful, Mike Wick and the Board of Trustees. The building will be open and staffed, but not open to the public. So, you can call. They have tons of online services available. And they're also looking for ways that they can service the public by still not being open to the public. But we did really feel it was important, if the schools were closing, it doesn't make sense for all the children to go congregate at the library. So, that decision was made. It was open today, but I believe it's closing tomorrow. Similarly, Recreation, there's a couple of weeks left of the winter programs. They've been suspended. Recreation will be providing people with a credit for any unused part of their program. And they've delayed the enrollment for the spring programs until further notice. So, thank you very much to Brendan and the Rec Commission for, you know, putting thoughtful consideration into this. As far as other town, Town Hall and other municipal offices are open for business. We're going to do that as long as feasible, as long as, you know, our public health folks tell us that it's still safe to do so. We want to be open for the public, but we would urge you, it would be a big benefit to us if you could just call ahead. We can provide a lot of assistance over the phone. We have a lot of things that a resident can do on the internet. We could do things by mail, depending upon what it is. And we really like to limit the foot, unnecessary foot traffic into Town Hall, just to, again, try to limit the spread, the spread of the virus. And I guess the town clerk is looking into how we're going to handle our election. And then we do have a town meeting in May that we'll have to start thinking about. But hopefully, we have a little bit of time on that one, that we can take some time to make a decision. But again, I just want to thank everybody and, you know, thank all the department heads. They've really come together to try to figure out a way to keep the community safe and keep as many services going as possible.
Again, Paul, just Amy and I spoke today, and I think, is the election April 3rd?
Fourth.
Fourth. She's going to keep the date, and we'll have the gym clean. I think the logistics of it may be altered a little bit in terms of making sure we don't have too many people in at once. And then she talked about potentially using some of the college students or other volunteers to help manage it in terms of the demographic of the volunteers who typically volunteer elections and may commit to contact. So, I think she's going to alter some things. She even mentioned some of the writing utensils or things that she was going to look at. But I think for, at least as a result of our last conversation, the facility will be ready and she's going to try to hold elections where they are.
I think I just want to clarify for the committee, what Eric was trying to say is the seniors are some of our best election workers. So, trying to figure out a way to, you know, to keep them safe and to see if we can allow them to continue to work the election as well.
Much better said. Thank you.
If I could just add, I was at the library today, and they were reminding people that they will be available by phone or online. And I'm thinking, maybe this time I will actually learn how to download a book from the online catalog. So, they're there to help people. So, thank you.
So, again, I just, it's going to be a quick meeting for you, but I just wanted to thank you. We are working together. Any decisions, we're aware of the decisions. And I think the town's emergency response team has been, again, well-prepared and a great resource to us. So, I just wanted to thank you for stopping out and informing the committee that all that's going on. So...
Well, thank you all for having me, and thank you for your kind words, Eric. And I could use a quick meeting at this time of the week right now. I appreciate it very much.
Before you leave, I think Mrs. Russo wanted to say something, and there may be other questions, so.
Again, I just want to echo the appreciation of the collaboration between the town and the schools. You don't realize how important it is until you're in a situation like this, and you don't realize just how well the collaboration works and moves until you're in a situation like this. And I cannot say how impressed I am with the level of professionalism, with the decision-making that's been made, that's allowed us to then start planning instead of a knee-jerk reaction, but planning for our students, planning for our community members who are most at risk. And I just, I just can't express as a community member, parent, how much I appreciate that level of cooperation and professionalism between Board of Health, town, and schools. So, just thank you.
Thank you. And we couldn't have done it without the way your staff works with us as well. They've been unbelievable.
But any other comments? Yes, questions?
Nothing. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks for your help. Thank you to the Board of Health, and keep yourself and everyone around you well.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Your input and all that you're doing in the town.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Bye, Paul. Yes, Dr. Conti, what else we got?
We got a few things I just want to talk through as a means of communication. We do, I'd like one vote from the school committee that I think I made you aware of. I want to point out that we have some very concerned and capable building administrators, central office administrators here. I think, just, I think demonstrating that we've all been trying to do what's best for kids and working together through this unprecedented time. So, I want to make sure I thank them for all that they've done and their staffs. And if you have any specific questions on particular levels or other things, people can answer those questions. But our, again, our teachers, our staff, again, we're going to mention our custodians several times, our clerical staff have all been great during, again, what has been a very new experience for many of us. So, with that, again, I'm going to go through some things. Patrick is going to, has been working on aspects of this, as have Bob and Nicole. So, we are going to get out tonight a communication to all of our staff and then to all of our parents. So, the point of tonight's meeting was to try to all get on the same page, and then the communications will go out after the meeting. So, what we know now is that the Burlington Public Schools will be closed until at least Monday, March 30th. So, it's going to, we're going to be closed for two weeks. And what we said in our message to parents in the community is that may be shorter or it could be longer. And just in speaking with the epidemiologists, they felt like we couldn't bend the community curve, the infection curve, unless we were out for a significant amount of time. I think that this is one of those times where it might not just be about Burlington, it might be about our area. And that, I guess I would encourage our families, while not quarantined formally, that it doesn't make sense to let hundreds of kids congregate at the Burlington Mall. That's not the point of the school closure. The school closure is to try to have some separation for a while to stop the spread of the virus as the state increases testing, so we get a better idea of where we're at, and we can move that forward. So, again, we're going to be closed to at least March 30th, two weeks, and then we'll be communicating during that time if we have to shorten or if we have to extend the leave, depending on the direction that we get. Many other states have made statewide recommendations. I know the Ohio governor came up very early and closed all public schools in Ohio for three weeks. So, and so other states have taken that tact. I think Rhode Island just did it a couple hours ago. They closed all Rhode Island schools, all three of them. So, but we will, we'll be paying attention to that. The last day of school, we're getting lots of questions about the last day of school, and there's some policy language here that's a little bit boring, but we'll say that the last day of school will be our 185th. So, that'll be Wednesday, June 24th. And that'll be a hard stop, whether we have two weeks off, three weeks off, four weeks off. The way the regulations are written is after April 1st, you don't have to make up any additional days beyond the 185th day that you schedule, including five days for snow. The commissioner has moved April 1st to that sort of, that date back to March 15th. So, from Sunday on, from March 15th on, we only have to do the 185 days. So, again, if anyone asks, it's going to be the hard stop on Wednesday, June 24th, which is our 185th, 185th day. I, we're getting some calls that we're going to go to school all summer and everything else like that. That's just not, not the case. Paying, again, Nicole has done a lot of work, both on the legal side of this and I think just making sure things can process and payroll can get processed. We're shut down. Education isn't happening. I think this is an administrative shutdown, so I think our employees are going to be on administrative leave during this time. We have some hourly workers and some other per diem workers that we want to continue to pay. So, we would like to pay as if we're open 180 days and just continue to function as we're functioning. And so that's my, my strong recommendation. And I wanted a vote of the committee to sort of allow us that to move forward. So, Nicole, again, did some research and felt like we needed to have a vote. So, I wanted to read that language and see if that was okay with the committee or to have your thoughts. But again, this is my, my strong recommendation. So, for the duration of the Burlington Public School closing commencing on Friday, March 13th, the school committee authorizes that, subject to appropriation, regular wages will continue to be paid to employees, including those not covered by a collective bargaining agreement and non-exempt employees.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there discussion on this, comments? I'd like, okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Chair votes aye. So, that's 3, 0, 1. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, good. I also want to reiterate, and I think I can speak for the whole committee, that we do want to support our staff who are so dedicated, whether they're on a union contract or not. And that's why I think we're all in support of this. We want to make sure that everybody is going to be okay. This is an emergency we can't control, but we can't control how we treat our employees. So, we're, I'm really pleased that Dr. Conti and Nicole have figured out how to take care of this problem. Thank you.
And just to inform all employees, we'll be sending this out, is if you have direct deposit, that's going to continue to function. We're just going to hold a physical check here for when we return. But again, the money will be deposited. And for those that have live checks, the live checks are going to be mailed on their regular schedule, so they'll be mailed on Thursday. Just please make sure that if you even have a live check and typically pick it up at work, that your address is, that your address is correct. Or if you've moved, let us know, because we'll be mailing those. So, so again, the payroll will be running as normal. Patrick, do you want to do lunch?
So, I want to thank you to the Burlington Food Pantry and People Helping People. We'll be offering free lunch foods for families of free and reduced lunch students. These are available on Tuesdays between 3:00 and 7:00. And we'll be putting out, again, a message to families as well this evening. And part of that, we created a new emergency call line. If there's pressing matters that people need like somewhat of an immediate response to, there'll be a voicemail that a few of us will make sure we're checking on a regular basis. So, I'll give that out a little bit later. So, the purpose of this is to say, if people really rely on the lunches here at school and breakfast items, on, the way it would work on a Tuesday is all, there'd be recipes and groceries, basically, to last you for the whole week for that one student for lunches and probably some additional items. And we're also setting it up so we could make some deliveries to some locations around town if getting to the food pantry is going to be an issue for some families. So, if I'm missing anything, let me know. But that will all go out, again, if people are watching, we'll send it out with, I'm going to ask that they call that number if they need assistance in getting the food to them. So, that would be one, one use of that emergency number that we created.
Could you repeat the times on Tuesday if you...
Yeah, it'll all be in the email, and we'll post it on the website. But the time typically, I think this is the way the food pantry functions, is 3:00 to 7:00 on Tuesdays, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Okay. And the phone number is available yet or not yet?
It's available.
Okay. Can we hear it?
Yeah, sure.
And it's on, available on the website?
It will be. I didn't want to put anything live till after the meeting in case something changed. We have a lot of great ideas. Some of them aren't always great.
Okay. Sure.
So, just to get everybody's feedback, once we get the okay, all this information will be posted. But the number that we have set up is 781-505-4900. So, 781-505-4900. And that will be checked numerous times throughout the day, so we can get back to people on pressing matters. That's also, we wanted one line for the district. If people have issues, if it's a Pine Glen issue, don't leave it on the Pine Glen phone. If it's a Memorial issue, don't leave it on the Memorial phone. We're going to check this for all the schools, and if it's a specific school issue, we'll get in touch with the administration at that school. So, again, we'll ask people to use that wisely, and we'll get back to them as quick as we can.
And so this phone number is not just for the lunch, for free lunches?
No.
This is for any questions regarding the emergency?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Monaco?
Where is the food coming from? Who's putting it together?
Again, I'm not part of the process of how this works in Burlington. I'm just getting new, like, I talked to the folks at the food pantry today, so they have a lot of volunteers that work over there. I don't know if we, we did send over some excess perishable items that we knew would go bad from our kitchens today, so they could use those as part of the pack, like yogurts and things that we just couldn't keep for two weeks and have them. There's a number of things, and I think Dr. Conti was going to mention that along the way, just to get the okay of the school committee. But we figured, rather than have them go bad, it was okay to share them with the food pantry.
Again, I think, let me see if I can answer your question. The food pantry will be supplying the food. I think we did send over some food from our school kitchens that was going to expire over the two-week period. So, we did, I guess, donate some food to the food pantry. But my understanding is the food pantry has enough food to provide students on free and reduced lunch.
Yeah. And they've reached out to the Greater Boston Food Bank to get more items over the next few weeks as well. So, they can handle what we have to, what we're going to need as well. That was their indication.
I saw a great post on Facebook this morning. It said, "When this is over, all that stuff you bought that you didn't need after all, give it all to the food pantry."
That's true. So, again, but if anyone is feeling, what's the term, food insecure, just make sure they call the number, and we will make sure that we direct you to the food pantry and get you fed. Again, Patrick mentioned the donation of food. I'm assuming that would be okay with the committee. Again, it doesn't make sense for it to go bad. And then the other thing is, I know we go over our monthly financial report, and there's often some concern about the cafeteria, the balance in the cafeteria account. This situation's not going to help us. So, if there was any hope of finishing the year in the black, I'm going to say that's just not going to happen. So, that deficit will be climbing, but I think it's obviously worth dealing with this situation. So, again...
Other questions on that issue? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make one more comment, that if anybody doesn't know how to get to where they need to get, call us. We'll get you there.
That is true. Special education, we have Mary Hood here as well. We had a lot of questions about that, and the commissioner gave us some information that we'll be sending out, and essentially, in simple terms, if there's no school, there's no services. And so we'll be posting resources to help families, but I wanted to read a quote from the commissioner, just so I make sure that I get it right. Again, this is going to be sent out to everybody as well, and this is a quote from his directive. "If a school closure causes educational services for all students to pause within a school or district, then the school or district is generally not required to provide services to the affected students with disabilities during that same period of time. However, districts should be communicating with parents and guardians prior to, during, and after a school closure regarding their child's IEP services. This ongoing communication will help educators, administrators, and parents, caregivers understand any impact of the closure on students' access to a free and appropriate public education. After an extended closure, districts should review how the closure impacted the delivery of special education and related services and convene individual IEP team meetings if necessary." So, again, in short, if there's no school, we are not providing special ed services. Again, if there are individual questions or concerns, we have that number available. And again, Mary, they could just send an email. We'll be checking and trying to communicate with families as needed. But again, we'll get that information out to folks, and we'll go from there. We did the emergency number.
That's wrong.
Oh.
I have to get, I have to find it. I guess that's, okay, so here's the real story. I'll tell you right now. I had to set this up. That was the voicemail number I had to call to set up the number, so I'm getting clarification on the number. But it will be posted on the website. That's another reason we don't post things before we get your okay.
Okay.
So, thank you, Carrie, for catching that in the audience.
Okay. So, let me repeat what Mr. Larkin just said, that the phone number we gave out a few minutes ago is not the accurate one. We are still working on getting the accurate one, and as soon as we have it, it will be posted on the website. Okay? So, I'm sorry. Apologize for that. And thank you.
So, they are going to call us. Yeah, right.
They're going to call and leave a message. I just wanted to give Bob a chance to talk, because the custodial staff has been, has been really great. And while we're shut down, and we're going to sort of have a hard shutdown for the first few days of the break, I want to explain, you know, why that is, and then sort of the cleaning, the cleaning situation from there. So...
So, talking with the custodial staff, with the guidance that's been given to us, and then, of course, we have some new guidance today, generally, five days has been the accepted length of time to remain away from any infected surfaces. Of course, we have been disinfecting and cleaning those surfaces. So, we've decided as a district, between now and the minimum of Wednesday, that we do not want anyone in the building. So, that means our buildings will be completely closed, uninhabited. We'll be doing drive-bys to make sure that our buildings are still safe. But as far as anyone congregating, meeting, or even our custodians being here in the buildings, we do not want that. As far as Thursday, we haven't even confirmed definitely that Thursday we will have them in here. But the expectation is, is again, we believe that we're safe and do not have any contact with the virus. But if we were to have it around, we want to make sure we give it the time to die on its own. Then what we will do is come in here and do some more disinfecting before we bring in more of our staff. As far as the rest of the staff, we have disconnected the ability for people to use their swipe cards to access the building. So, anyone, whether they're on our emergency team, whether they're 24-hour access administrators, they will continue to work, but we do encourage you all to stay away from the building. Again, just so we can maintain that the building is free of users, but also free of any germs as well. So, if there was to be a fire, a break-in, emergency, the police and fire would still be able to access that. Again, you all, as administrators, could come into the buildings that you're allowed to, but we would strongly recommend that you don't. Again, I can't have a conversation right now without thanking the custodial staff for all the work that they do. Even today, there was a crew of at least five people up here in central office, cleaning it, wiping doorknobs, handles. Again, they're just doing amazing work, and they're, they're pretty much on the first line right now. So, thank you to them. Take some time off, spend some time with your families. Once we communicate again, we'll have you all back in here, and we're all safe and move forward. So, thank you.
So, again, with that, I just wanted to take a few minutes and give some people a chance to thank their respective teachers, crews, and buildings, and have an opportunity for you to ask any questions at any level you might have. But, and if there's anything that you think we're missing, I just wanted to hear from the committee, the committee yourself. I think, I'm not exactly sure, we're in the middle of our budget process. I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work. I know the open meeting laws have changed a little bit to allow some more flexibility, whether we want to change how we're meeting, the working sessions, not that our meetings ever are overcrowded, but I'm not sure that our schedule may have to be adjusted just a little bit too. So, we'll continue to communicate to, through that. So, again...
Can I mention one more thing?
Oh, please.
I have the right phone number. I just called it and double-checked.
Okay. Excellent.
So, our emergency line, if people have pressing matters that they really need addressed in short order, 781-238-4674. Again, this is for parents and students who just need to get in touch with someone. We'll make sure that happens. For staff that are watching, again, I know they can connect with their building principals at any time, and we all have cell phone connection that obviously won't be turned off for a few weeks, I think, given the nature of this, just in case anybody needs to get in touch with us. The other thing I wanted to mention, also putting up a Google form when we put up this message tonight, where if parents have questions that are, don't need to be answered immediately, like, is this going to happen? Is that going to happen? Have you thought of this? Because, again, this is new territory. I'm sure there are more unanswered questions than are answered right now. They can ask them in this Google form, and we will, on a daily basis, post answers to the questions that are out there and have it as a FAQ, FAQ post that we'll just keep adding to. So, that way, hopefully, people feel like they're getting the responses they need.
And some of them, we're also, it's open for students as well, because I've gotten a few student emails, and we're going to direct those to you. I think, Joe, some of them were, how is this going to affect my grade, different things like that. So, we want to make sure we answer those questions to lower anxiety. And, Joe, I'll put you on the spot, as we were scheduled to have SATs tomorrow, is that correct? And those have been canceled?
Correct, those have been canceled.
So, let me invite Joe up, and we'll just go through different levels at a time with the high school. And, Joe, again, no people in the building, obviously, until Thursday, but there are kids applying to colleges, and you had some other things worked out. Again, all this is going to be followed up and written for them, but I just wanted to give Joe a chance. And then, you said you're also reaching out to some students who need some support, so.
Yeah, and Mr. Sullivan will be sending a communication to parents, I think, as well, with more detailed information, but administrators at the high school will be available via email. And again, that will be on Mr. Sullivan's email. And we had a meeting today with some of the mental health professionals at the high school, so in terms of support services, we do have a plan in place. We're going to be reaching out to some students that we might be a little bit concerned about being at home during a relative, you know, could be an anxious time for them. So, we have a plan to reach out to them. Again, our office, Teresa Cavanaugh and Patty Lewis, our secretaries, are very accessible, and I know Teresa, our registrar, is checking emails, and so, if students are making transcript requests, as you said, for college, we want to make sure, and colleges have been very flexible as well, but we are still able to function and deliver transcripts as necessary. Scholarship program, a lot of the deadlines for the scholarship program are April 1st. Again, these applications are available online, but we do plan to extend that deadline as well, so it doesn't negatively impact any student's potential to get local scholarships. And again, I think a lot of the resources that have been referenced tonight, and I shared some with Patrick, I think, once the resource document is released, parents and students will be able to see any available resources that are out there.
Okay. Ms. Russo?
Thank you. Two questions I keep getting is one about MCAS and the other about AP testing.
So, those, I think it's, I don't know the answer to those just yet. My guess is MCAS is going to be canceled because school will not be open. I don't think it will be canceled for the year, but I don't want to, I know Dr. Conti has been in connection with the state on the MCAS, so I'm not sure. I can't answer that one. AP is a national, nationally standardized exam, so I think, again, that's going to have to come from them. We can't just change the date of that, so we would need some direction from College Board, but, again, my guess is, my hope is, that there'd be some flexibility with this situation, and they would certainly allow schools to offer the AP exam at a later date.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work, too.
No problem at all.
Yes, Ms. Monaco? So, the students that would have been taking the SAT?
Yep.
Tomorrow, most likely sophomores and juniors, or mostly juniors?
Mostly juniors, mostly juniors, and with the SAT, again, that's a national exam, so we have quite a few students that come from other communities as well, so it's not just impacting here. We have a lot of students from Bedford, Billerica, Wilmington, and...
So, if they're worried about getting them taken, or, you know, oftentimes, it's a repeat, get this scores up, do you think they'll have to wait till the next testing cycle, or do you think this will be rescheduled?
No, they actually, they gave us a date, which, we're going to have to talk about that, but the date they gave as a makeup right now would be March 28th. So, but again, I think, just like we've been hearing, things are changing daily, so they set that date of March 28th a few days ago, and I think now, where the situation has escalated quite a bit, my hope is they may extend that a little bit further out. But I think, at this point, again, it's a standardized exam, so they're trying to get the whole, essentially, the whole country or students that missed this one ought to take it on the same day. So, right now, they've set the 28th, but again, that's a College Board decision, that's not a Burlington High School decision. So, again, I'm going to be in touch with them, and as soon as I hear any, any new information, I would certainly.
Let us know.
Let you know.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay.
Joe, just want to mention sports, because we've got some questions on that. I know it's sort of not as important as everything else, but were you part of that conversation? Are they, didn't the MIAA push?
As far as I know, it's been postponed.
Till the, till the end of March?
Yeah, I haven't heard a specific date. I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay.
But I did, yeah, that was going to be postponed.
There is a, there was a notification that it was decided, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the spring, no spring sports seasons for MIAA would start until March 30th. So, that's what I read today.
That's what I'm looking on their website right now. Delay the start of 2020 spring season to March 30th.
And I believe Mr. Hart, our athletic director, did say that there would not be practices or anything else until March 30th at the, and as you said, I mean, things may change.
Yep, so that's it.
So, as this shows, to everyone, everything is quite fluid, things change all the time. Keeping up with this information is really difficult, and I want to thank all of you again for your valiant attempts to keep up with the information and doing such a great job at it, too.
And Eric, you did mention, there was a question from a student about the grading window, and it's, Mr. Sullivan, I think, plans to extend the quarter as needed, depending on the length of time that students are out of school. So, there was a discussion around that.
Yeah, we'll be as flexible as we can. I think that's the answer to most things, but, but thank you very much, Joe, and I'm sure you'll be available to answer questions if there are any other questions. Deb, want to come on up?
Thank you.
Preschool, we had a talk, and again, just our preschool.
Hello?
So, again, you all know Deb Clark. Again, you spoke to your parents. Again, you've been communicating directly with your families and your staff.
Yep, so, we have had some calls. Our nurse, Jessica Garan, has been taking a lot of those calls and trying to, you know, alleviate some fears and tell them what we're doing. So, she's really been inundated with a lot of that, so, you know, kudos to her for that. Sandy Langefeld, our secretary, too, has been fielding some of that. But today, what we did, we've been preparing, you know, proactively, if this was going to happen for a little while. So, today, we sent out letters to incoming families, if they're coming in for an evaluation or a meeting in the next couple of weeks, that we'll be in touch when we get back to school. We've called families who are coming in just for meeting, some of our current families, and letting them know that we will call them as well. They were very understanding. We connected with our early intervention cohort and told them that for the next two weeks, we won't be here, we won't be able to do the home visits, the transition planning conferences, and our team chair, Andrea Hayes, reached out to all her EHI providers to let them know that she won't be making those as well. So, we've been in communication that way. I did send out an email to parents, just letting them know some BECC specific information. We also, this week, our teachers and therapists, in record time, we developed an activity document with some activities that kids can do at home. It's about five or six pages long. Teachers and therapists did that. There are some online resources, but we know not everybody has access to online, so we have some recipes for Play-Doh, some games that they can do just at home with the materials that they might have, you know, even just reading, just some of those, some of those things, some fine motor and some gross motor activities. So, I think that's going to be, I'm not sure if it's posted to the district website yet, but once we have that link, I was told parents I would share that link with them. One of our subset, we only have one sub-separate classroom, so some of those activities might not work for some of those kids, so their teacher, Tiffany DeBraccio, was in today, creating some materials that she mailed home before she left today. So, we tried to take into account the different learning styles of all the kids. And I did say in my letter, I'll be checking email regularly, trying to reply in a timely manner to anything that comes up. But, yeah, the teachers and the staff, all of our staff, the therapists, everybody has just been very helpful. We've been doing a lot of cleaning down there, not that we don't anyway, but a lot of extra cleaning. People have been flexible. We did have several staff come in today just to take things home, to prepare them for when we do come back, so I think I got everything.
So, thank you, and please pass on our gratitude to your, to your staff. And again, if families have questions, we'll, from the preschool, we'll direct those to Deb, and Deb will be available to answer those. Any other questions?
Ms. Russo?
I just want to say thank you for putting those resources together. I have older children, so two weeks, I left them outside playing in the front yard, but the thought of younger children in two weeks and, well, am I going? And it's not like a snowstorm this, or the summer, where you can go out to places with them and entertain them a little more. This is really hunker down in your house with toddlers and younger students, so having those resources, I can see being invaluable, and also, the ability for parents to call, because I'm sure there will be behaviors and different actions at home that might be different, but that they can run by and work through with, with one of you. Same thing for special ed, you know, this is, this is, again, a very different situation to be at home with, and having those resources is going to be huge. So, I appreciate that effort, putting those out there, thinking through them, and then being available for the parents as issues might arise. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
And one more thing, we did put on the BECC website, from the Fred Rogers Center, just how to talk to your child about coronavirus, and just kind of laying some of those fears without being too specific for young children, but having that discussion if they have anything. So, that's on the district website, or the BEC page of the district website.
Yes, Ms. Monaco?
I have a little guy that's sad.
I'm sorry.
And I'm sure his parents will appreciate the resources.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Thanks again so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Carrie, you want to? Again, thanks for coming. Middle school staff has been outstanding, custodial staff outstanding. You said you had a bunch of folks in today, and so, and any questions on sort of grading or anything like that, we'll try to be flexible as possible, or?
So, we actually lucked out a little bit, because our trimester just ended this past Wednesday, so we're asking teachers to finish up the final grades. There will be, of course, be some folks who might be missing an assignment, and we'll address individual kind of situations, but we are hoping to be able to communicate those grades to families electronically during the closure, and then, when we return to school, hard copies of report cards will go home. So, we, the timing kind of worked for us there. But our faculty and staff have been amazing, and can't say enough, thank you, Mr. Kuna, for singing the praises of the custodians, because they have been wonderful, so, thank you.
Yeah, I heard even before, some of your teachers were commenting that even while we were open, there were crews were walking around, wiping down doorknobs, railings, common areas, and just even during the day, all constantly, so, again, so, thank them for that for us.
Absolutely.
And again, if there are any middle school parents or families who have questions, they can call the number, they can go to the website, and we'll get those questions to Carrie as soon as possible, so, again.
They can email us directly as well, if they would rather we are, as an administrative team, as a faculty, monitoring and responding to emails. So, we sent out a newsletter today, kind of delineating kind of what the plan is in terms of, I'm not requiring work, but encouraging kids to read and read anything, whatever, whatever a high interest. You know, there's lots of information to read out there right now about sports, or read a book, or, so we encourage that. And I know that the district has also been working on pulling together academic resources and kind of social-emotional resources to send out, so as soon as that's done, we'll get that out, and there's some information about middle school there as well.
Carrie, awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anything else in the comments, or?
Nope.
Thank you, and every, all your staff.
I just, I had one thing, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Larkin?
So, thanks, no, Carrie alluded to it. While we transition to, it was coming next.
While we change to the next administrator, and I want to thank all the administrators for being here, yes? Mr. Larkin?
Yeah.
Oh, a question for you.
While Deb comes up, I'm just, I'm just going to say that we are going to have a post by Monday. We just, rather than have multiple posts on the learning resources, we're going to get it all together, and staff from different schools have been sending stuff to us so we can all have it in one place.
Okay.
And the other group I wanted to mention were our clerical staff, who also came in today and monitored the phones, and really bailed us out, trying to get things organized to get communication out, and want to thank them for all their extra efforts as well.
Yeah, I didn't mean to exclude them, but thank you, Patrick, that's pointing them out.
I'm sorry, just wanted to mention one thing, because not, this doesn't apply to some of, it applies to some of our families who applied for next year, so they might not be getting emails and that. We usually send out our acceptance letters for next year, the last week of March. Sandy got those all together very quickly. We did our lottery, we picked everything, and we put them in the mail today. So, families will get those letters next week, notifying them of, if they were selected, and what program they were selected for.
Thank you again, that's wonderful. Before we have another administrator come up, we've referred to educational resources. I don't know, Dr. Conti, if this is a good time, or after everyone's done, to talk about remote resources versus remote learning. People may be asking questions about that.
Yeah, we'll do that after.
Afterward, okay.
So, we'll bring up the elementary crowd.
Okay.
The gang.
Didn't know we'd be treated to see you all.
What do they call it now? The crew? Is that it, the crew? So, the crew?
They're going to be sick to see you now.
No, we didn't know we'd have this treat to see you so soon. Thank you.
Again, we're going to echo a lot of the gratitude, again, there, custodial crews, clerical crews, teachers have done sort of amazing work in this ramp-up. I think the closure message and transition was, was done exceptionally smoothly, and I think they're going to reiterate Carrie's push to promote reading, I'm sure, over the next couple of weeks, but I'll give them a chance just to thank their, thank their staffs and to, and to, again, encourage their, did you do that?
I may have.
Encourage their, their, their students to, to read during the closure, so, so thank you all, again, it's just, wow.
Yeah, so, very grateful for the talented, talented team that has been working around the clock, basically, for the last couple of weeks as this unfolds, and today, to our nursing staff, our, our administrative assistants who came in to answer the door, answer the questions, and really just support our own staff in the building. So, teachers were there, everybody was available to support the parents and families and our students, and I know we had spoken to Patrick about the resources and without sending home different information, so that one resource will go home Monday as a collaborative effort, and again, encouraging students, as Kristen said, a little bit older, go outside and play, you know, read, find activities to practice, you know, at home. Teachers won't be sending out individual packets of work for students, but certainly encouraging them to keep up with their, their academic practice to the best of their abilities while they're home and keep, keep active. But the custodial crews, the secretaries, the nurses, my assistant principal, which I know I try not to say too loudly, because nobody else has one, you know, we're all there today and supporting families and students, so very grateful for the efforts on their behalf.
I just want to thank to Wendy Pavelcheck. The amount of animals we've had and the orchestration of keeping our four-legged friends and our two-legged friends and our flying friends all safe was a huge undertaking. The clerical staff, nursing staff this morning were just amazing. Saw several teachers in the building. It was great to see so many people supportive, talking to parents, supporting parents, helping them through what is an unusual and interesting time. So, we couldn't do it without all our staff, and we're greatly appreciative of them and everything they've done, and I know, just when I was in talking to the calf this morning, and I was like, what are we doing with all this food? And they're like, it's already going to the food pantry, we've got everything set up. It was just amazing that the independence of the different departments could do what they do and did so frequently and effectively and quickly. So, thank you to everyone.
You shut that one off.
Can you hear me? Okay. As someone who was previously an elementary school teacher, elementary school teachers are extremely flexible. You're rolling with whatever happens. This is far outside of anything that typically happens, but everyone has done a really incredible job, incredible job of just rolling with this, and we're just moving forward. In the building today, there's been a lot of teachers that have stopped by, a lot of teachers to get materials to be ready for when the kids return. Echoed by the previous two principals, our clerical staff, our custodian staff, our nurses have been incredible through this all, especially our nurses have been such a wealth of knowledge. And also, to one thing that really stood out today, our guidance staff and our school psychologists have reached out to a lot of families just to check on them, to check on the kids, and they're going to continue to do so during this timeout. So, I just want to say a big thank you to all of them.
Great.
We had the fortune of being here just earlier this week, and we spent a fair amount of time talking about social-emotional learning, and what's happening right now certainly falls in that category. There is like a sadness and a loss for teachers and for kids that we certainly, I think, have all experienced at the elementary level. So, I just want to acknowledge that. Having lunch with kids this week, they were expressing there was obviously a climbing of worry in the building. So, in talking to kids at lunch on Wednesday, they were really articulate about what is happening, what they understand and what they don't understand. So, I would just like to share in this forum that kids, the 24-hour news cycle is a kid's worst nightmare, and it may be many adults' worst nightmare as well. So, if I could suggest that maybe people take a break from a news cycle, because students are hearing and listening, and they commented very articulately with me, I hate the sounds that they always make. And when you stop and think about that, when they break those news cycles, it's always with like an intense beat. And I talked about 10 kids on Wednesday who all said, why do they all make that sound? Why does it, why does it, it sounds angry, it sounds mad. So, I think, take a lesson from the children. We know what we need to know, you don't need to hear it 24 hours a day. I'm already saturated, I can only imagine what it's going to be like with everybody being home for two weeks. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that even staff coming in today, there's just a sadness of not being together. So, it's kind of a blessing and a curse because we are a community that likes to gather. So, I think we're all recognizing the power of gathering and the fact that we're losing it temporarily. So, we're already planning our welcome back party. I've been in contact with, Lisa Klein was in today, my PTO president. So, those things are, we have to keep Brian.
Great. Thank you all for coming. Any comments? Thank you for everything you're doing and all your staff as well.
Amazing job, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just honestly, we're almost done. Marion Barber, you guys want to come up and add anything?
No.
And I think that's everybody, so that's great.
I just want to say thanks to all my nursing, nurses on the team. They have absolutely been phenomenal. I think our community is completely on edge of the uncertainty of what's going on in the world today, and they're scared. So, the volume of calls that we've gotten has been absolutely crazy, and they've handled it with poise and calmness, and I think that's been essential this past couple of weeks. So, I want to commend their performance this week, the last couple of weeks.
I think I can add, what we all know, this is a very, very challenging closure for students with disabilities and their families. The lack of services has a very strong impact on their lives. I want to thank all of our teachers and the team chairs. We started talking about what to do several weeks ago, and the team chairs have worked with the special education teachers, general education teachers, their principals, guidance counselors, everyone in the building to make some suggestions for families in ways to help. That doesn't make up for lack of services, but it's some suggestions, and I appreciate all the work that they've put together. I was on a conference call this afternoon with Russell Johnson, and he reiterated exactly what Dr. Conti said about services during school closures. We have let most families know that meetings that were scheduled during this time period will be rescheduled. Evaluations that are taking place when school resumes, timelines will resume, and we will continue to follow that process for developing IEPs and evaluating students for eligibility. The districts are handling things differently in terms of students placed at private day schools. Some districts are continuing to transport students to day schools that are open. We are currently doing that. Other districts have chosen not to provide the transportation. Russell Johnson was very clear today that that was a district-level decision. So, it's kind of fading fast because most, I've had at least 10 to 15 schools today stay that the private schools were closing. So, a number of them have closed for two weeks as well. But we are continuing to transport students to schools that are open the same way we would during a snow day.
Comments or questions?
Yes.
Just that it's just such a difficult situation, and I give everybody, again, so much credit and appreciation for everything you're trying to do and help parents and family move through this in the best possible manner for everyone. So, thank you.
And I would, again, thank you and your staff for trying to make this as smooth as possible. It's not going to be easy, there's so many families that this is going to impact on, very difficult situation. And I, you know, if there are things that we can help with, you offered your email, right? And the emergency phone number, if there are things that we can do to help these families where it's a much different situation than a typical student in the school that got closed down, if there are things that we can do to help, please let Maryhood know or let us know on the emergency phone numbers. So, thank you.
Thank you again. Please pass on our gratitude. So, with that, Madam Chair and the rest of the school committee, I just wanted to thank you for your support in terms of supporting all of our employees in the district. I think this is an unprecedented time, and we're obviously going to make some mistakes, and I appreciate you doing that. But, again, folks have been outstanding. Madam Chair, you asked about remote learning versus resources, and again, when we've discussed remote learning in the past with this committee, it's really been in, it's been, those conversations have been about missing a one day at a time, like during a snowstorm. And again, those days, the argument we were making is that a day in February, the day that we were trying to replicate would be a day sort of to the middle or end of June, sort of that one trade-off. There's no way that we can replicate the quality of our curriculum, the quality of our teachers, the quality of the buildings, the communities that each of these buildings have with a remote curriculum over an extended period of time. So, that's really the difference, is we can't try to replicate that, nor would we want to. So, what we are trying to do instead is just to provide some resources for families that they can use if they so choose, and again, set up some helplines and some other offers of support, again, moving forward. And I think we're all working through this situation, again, for the first time, and we're communicating well. I don't think you're going to find a more outstanding, dedicated group of administrators anywhere, and we're doing the best that we can. So, again, thank you for your support, and thank you all for navigating the situation and being here on a Friday evening. So, I really do appreciate that.
Are there other comments or questions from the committee?
It's more towards Dr. Conti, but is there anything you need as a school committee that we should be doing, reaching out to the legislator, or is there any role that we should be playing to mitigate and help make this a better process later?
Yeah, well, I guess I'll say this has sort of my personal bent on it, is someone mentioned MCAS testing. So, the MCAS test, that's really, the only one that's high stakes is the 10th grade test. So, the testing window for high schoolers, I think, closes at the end of March. So, they're talking about moving the window. I think that's relatively straightforward. But I think the federal government is a source of mandate for state testing, and so I know there's some work. Patrick, we were on a call of the federal Congress to potentially give districts a waiver from that responsibility for the year. The thing in Massachusetts is we also have a state regulation that controls testing. So, even if the feds voted to delay testing or postpone testing for a year, our state legislature would also have to do the same thing to relieve us from that responsibility. So, I think as a committee, we can certainly talk about this during the break or at another meeting, but if you wanted to contact, if you believed in that, which, again, I would support, if you wanted to contact our local representation and Massachusetts Association of School Committees to get us a one-year hiatus from MCAS, I think that would be something that would benefit us. I think, Mr. Essler mentioned sort of the community, it's going to be really challenging to bring kids back when we bring kids back, and the first thing that they do is going to have to be tested. I just think that's not a, that's not a healthy way to address their social-emotional needs to begin with. I think there's going to be a lot of community reestablishment, and I think school's going to look differently for the rest of the spring than people are typically used to. And I just think having testing thrown in there, just for the point of testing or fulfilling a regulation, is not what we should be doing the best for the kids. So, those are my thoughts.
Ms. Monica?
What about the sophomores, juniors, and seniors that have to pass MCAS in order to graduate?
I think.
Like the kids that take biology now and want to take the biology MCAS?
I think, what we're looking for there is just more flexibility in terms of the testing windows.
Yeah.
So, again, and I think the high school students will be a little bit easier to adjust than our third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders. So, again, I think we're looking for flexibility, but that's the only real high-stakes assessments that they have. For the state to take grades three to eight, a one-year hiatus, I think wouldn't do any harm. I don't think any of our expert educators would think it's going to do any harm, and I think they would unanimously support that position of delaying for.
Just think about the high school kids.
So, but I think we would meet the high school, we would get them their diplomas. I think that would be it.
Other comments? I want to also support what you just said, Dr. Conti, about, it sounds like there's two levels, encouraging our federal congresspeople and senators to waive those requirements for this year, and also to be in touch with our state representatives and senators about possibly having hiatus for one year. And in my mind, this sort of reinforces what I believe, which is that there isn't, these standardized tests aren't necessarily the best judge of how the education is going. And if, you know, in this year in particular, if math students haven't learned that topic yet and it's on the test, it doesn't matter if you move the window back because they haven't had the instruction on that topic. And I'm pretty sure it would go the same way with others. So, I would, I will be pursuing that, and if people feel that way, I would encourage people also to be in touch with their state legislators as well as the federal. So, thank you for that.
So, again, I don't really have anything else on the agenda. I just wanted to have this meeting just in case you had questions. I think it was an opportunity for us to also begin the communication with the rest of the community, have one common understanding with all of our staff, and for us just to start this break all on the same page. And so, I want to thank you for your time as well, and we'll be communicating with staff and parents at the conclusion of this meeting and then periodically throughout the break. If you're approached by any family or parent or community member who has an issue, we'll make sure that you have the tools to direct them to the right places to get answers. So, we can do that. So, again, just wanted to thank you for your time, and I know this was another meeting in a time of the year when we have many meetings, and I appreciate you spending your Friday night here as well. So, again, thank you very much.
This is obviously very important to everybody in the community, and we want to give our gratitude for all the work that you're doing to make this go as smoothly as it can. Obviously, it's something that we can predict. We can't predict what's going to happen even tomorrow, but I really appreciate you staying on top of it. And if I can reiterate that we will, after this meeting, you'll be sharing the information that we just.
I may have emailed the parents during the meeting.
You did.
Before you.
Okay, and that they'll be, you know, on the website and at this emergency phone number, available the last day of school, which is now June 24th, et cetera. Those pieces of information will be available to people in a variety of ways, it sounds like, right?
Yeah, I wanted to say.
Yes, Mr. Larkin?
Sorry, just, I just have to say, because I was fortunate to be in the background and just to listen to our superintendent and the other superintendents, the way they got together on this, and really talked about it, and there were some experts involved, and the town administrators as well. But I just want to thank Dr. Conti and all the superintendents and town managers in Middlesex County that were involved in this decision. I want to credit them because I think honestly, it's something nobody's ever dealt with before, and they showed real leadership. So, it was great.
Agreed. Are there further comments from anyone who's in the audience or the committee? Then I would accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Chair votes aye.